Father, we thank you for all that you do for our county. We thank you for your presence here tonight. Father, we ask you to bless this county with the very best and heaven's hope. We ask you to watch over our citizens and our departments, Lord, and we ask you to guide our commissioners, Lord, and give them the right decisions that you will be proud of and they can live with. Father, this is a good board, and we thank you for it. And we ask you to always be mindful of their future. We ask you, Lord, that you would reach down and touch our county, and it would be a county that's known for its commitment and its, Lord, its loyalty to you. Lord, we ask these saints in Christ Jesus' name and all of God's people. Amen.
Much to the sound of the sound, by Mr. Gooden. Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Matters of interest to the commissioner, you want to have anything? If not, I'd make presentation of older American or proclamation. Mr. Tilly Robinson, please, if you want to join. Which I am using.
Three eight.
Whereas Blaine County joins the nation to recognize an older American Awareness Month in May two thousand seventeen. Whereas Blaine County includes a community of approximately nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight older adults that richly contribute to our community. Whereas Blaine County acknowledges that what it means to age has changed for the better, the golden years. Whereas Blaine County is committed to supporting older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities that focus on independence. And whereas Blaine County can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by involving older adults in the redefining of aging in our community, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encourage older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and provide an opportunity for older adults to share their experiences. Now therefore, we, the Blaine County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim that May two thousand seventeen is the Older American Awareness Month and urge every resident to take time during this month to acknowledge our older adults and the people who serve them as essential and vital parts of our community.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All of our seniors from Blaine County, thank you very much.
Presentation of Nurse Week proclamation. Father, nurses will come up. I think we have nurses from Blaine County Health Department and Cape Fear Blaine County Hospital. So if y'all want to all come up, please. Whereas the over thirty million, three million registered nurses in the United States contribute to our nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas the nursing profession plays a critical role in improving patient outcome, increasing access, coordinating care, and reducing healthcare costs. And whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nurse profession meets the difference in emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings. Whereas a renewed emphasis on primary and preventive healthcare will require better utilization of all our nation's registered nurse resources. Whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. Whereas along with the American Nurses Association, the Blaine County Commissioners have declared the week of May sixth through the twelfth as National Nurse Week. Therefore, it will be resolved that Blaine County Board of Commissioners ask that all residents of Blaine County to join and honor the registered nurse who care for all of us and be, if Father, resolved that the residents of Blaine County celebrate the Registered Nurse Week accomplishment and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show appreciation for the nation's registered nurse, not just during this week, but if opportunity can throughout the year. So, um, who wants to receive the one from Health Department?
I appreciate it. I appreciate the board for always supporting us and especially appreciate my nurses. Very good.
At Blaine County Hospital?
First thing, the chairman of the committee.
Congratulations.
But on behalf of Blaine County Commissioners and citizens of Blaine County, we really appreciate what y'all do every day. It's a tough and trying job and a lot of opportunities, but serves a lot of good for the Lord of Blaine County Hospital and Health Department. So, thank you.
Individual delegations wishing to address the Board of Commissioners. Anyone here like to speak? Okay, Hope NC four. If you come aboard, please. Rather, we might go nuts here. Turn around here, have a seat.
As others going around, my name is Ashley Smith.
Martha Romell.
Kathleen Page.
And we are working for a newly formed program called Hope for NC. We are a federally funded program under FEMA. Just a little bit about what we do. We are crisis counselors, and we are going out into communities to reach survivors of Hurricane Matthew. In reaching those survivors, we, before we go out there, we gather resources in the community, known and unknown, whether they know them or not, if they can get to them or not. We still gather the resources and we take them to the survivors of Hurricane Matthew.
We are, we are outreach program in which we take the services to them and the services meaning that you see them, what we do basically, we just take, we connect them with resources that are in the community. So instead of having them to come in and try to find resources, we just take the contact name and number to them and have them to contact resources that may be available to them.
And we, and we will be going door to door. And these T-shirts are the T-shirts that you, that you guys will see. Everybody in the community will see, having to go door to door. One thing that we do not have is money. Basically, all we do is link. We link them first, people, to better, to agencies who better, who could better assist them to get back to their pre-disaster state.
How can we refer the citizens to you all? How can we, how can we do this as a commissioner?
We have, we have some flyers and pamphlets with our number on the bottom of it. And I'll, and we will be going to the disaster-affected areas, but we do know that there are some individuals staying with family members and some of the non-affected areas. So we will be going to those areas as well, so everybody can be reached.
We have tried to get to churches, to the agencies around and leave them flyers and brochures so they'll be aware of what we are doing and they can also give this information to anybody that they know. So we're trying to get the word out like that. And we do meetings such as this, we try to leave information for them in image and span, so that they'll be aware.
You've mentioned that your, your goal is to link and refer. What agencies are you referring, just to name a few?
Well, I mean, it depends on the, the need of the person. If they need medical needs, we would refer them to a doctor. If they don't have, well, if they don't have insurance. And we find a doctor who accepts patients, whether or not they have insurance or not, we can refer them to there.
Or if there is, they have a need for additional food, we will find them a food bank that would assist them with that, any things like that.
Also, in referring to your doctors, do you have a list of physicians in the local area? Referring to Blaine County specifically, if you were to come to an area or you were given a leave of individual or home that were survivors of this disaster but their home was, and they're currently displaced, I guess, how would you then go about, did you give me a scenario? An example of how it would step by step occur?
We are not, we have not gathered all the resources in Blaine County yet. We are working in Columbus County and we're working our way over here. We, they have to hire one more person for Blaine. So once that they are onboard, then we can hit the ground running, I mean, actually going to their homes, doing that. But right now, we're trying to gather resources. So that's why we're going around to the agencies and asking the agencies to give us updated information on what they have to offer. So if we run into a situation out there, we can say that this agency does this and that agency is going to do this.
Okay, so this is the newfound program that is offered by FEMA.
Yes.
Do you have a list of agencies already that has been provided to you that so you know where to go? How are you determining where to go to gather the information for those individuals that has started now and taken effect now? How are you now able to provide the necessary questions, answers to the questions that people probably ask when you come to their door?
We have an agency guide. We have a county guide that's provided, hanging out on the internet. Okay, your county website, we have that. And what we are doing now, if, we're not really seeing individuals in, you know, in their homes right now because we haven't actually put boots on the ground over in Blaine County yet, because we're still gathering resources. But how it happens, how it will happen, is that if we go out and we find that there's a need, then we will see what we have in our toolkit and that's all the resources that we have gathered. And if it's not in our toolkit to help them or assist them, then we will try to go, we'll come back to the office and we'll touch bases with whoever we can to see if they have anything to help these individuals.
Wonderful. I have one more question.
Sure.
I don't mean to drill, but you know, this is very important to you. One is very much appreciated. So we just needed that a little bit more. We could ask, we can, you know, help assist any way we can. What, once everything, because I know this has, this is up and running currently, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's up and running, but we still have, obviously, from what you said, everything in place to make it run effectively. You, you said it is up and running, but yet it's not really up and running. So I guess what can citizens today expect to receive from your services versus what will be expected to receive once everything and boots on the ground have been, you know, educated and schooled and made the proper communication with the agencies? What can they expect to gain from, you know, enrolling in this program that you're offering?
Well, if you, the flyer that we gave you, if you turn on the back, you will see two blocks there. And those are kind of the services that we will be able to provide for them.
And this is not you yourselves, this is who, y'all are the middle person. You're the one that's doing the group work.
That's right.
And how these services, the treatments and counseling, how has this been based? Because I know this is based in North Carolina, but this is one of the first natural disasters that we haven't had in a while that has displaced so many. We just aren't prepared for this, called the board. So how, what studies, what criteria have you, you know, gathered to make sure that, you know, all of the different items you have listed here in your plan are going to work? Who have you based this off of?
I cannot tell you that, but if you would like to speak with our director, Martha Locklear, she will be the contact person that can answer that question.
Do you have a contact number for her I can get after the meeting?
Oh, yes. I'll give it to you.
No, we did, we did do a training game goals for before, way before the program even started. So that training, that training equipped us enough to go out there. And we did a bunch of scenarios and all that good stuff, so we'll know how things would work.
I was looking at this Federal Emergent Management Agency Program with FEMA, the way it's situated, it's coming through the MCO of East Point, who, that's who is, they were flown through to East Point. Would that be an agency that we would need to talk to? Because we got some things scheduled with East Point this time. Would that be someone that we could refer to as to how this program would work since it's going through East Point? Do they have a role in how you guys orchestrate what you're doing?
You can speak with our director and I'm going to get Martha Locklear, and she would be the next person in line in the end. She would, you know, tell you from that point on. So I'll give you her number right now.
I don't want to get flown through to East Point.
Excuse me?
If this is, if they're both through East Point, they're in top program.
For psychological.
It's East Point. And then there is the East Point's attachment area.
How long you been in Columbus County?
Working in Columbus County, it's, it's new.
Okay, so you got started in Columbus County and now you're transitioning here. Now, in Columbus County, have you have a database of services that you already use for your program?
We have both, a binder that we take with us. That's our, our direct toolkit. And then we also have an expandable folder with copies of resources.
But you use two.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you plan to do in Blaine County?
Mm-hmm.
Is to establish a portfolio of services?
Right, we're going to have them to all those resources.
Our emergency director, who came up right behind, he probably can assist you with some of that. Have you already?
Yes, sir. I'll talk to him today.
Thank you.
How long has your door been up? Why did you choose to start Columbus County?
We have.
How many boards do you have?
Right now, we have three here. We're supposed to get another one for this county. This, this, this grant is serving Robinson, Columbus, and Blaine. And as people apply, then they are trying to select them. And so now they're in the process of getting that last person for over here. They wanted someone that was in this area that knew it well, better than people in Columbus County or Robinson. So that's what they're doing now. So while we started over there is because I'm from Columbus County. And so, and I'm from Faribault. And so, as you know, that's one of the areas that was hard to hit. So we, since we were from Columbus County, that's what we just started. And so we're going to, and here again, some of us will probably won't be working Blaine until we get the workers over here. Yeah. So we got to, we got to try to serve everybody that we possibly can and carry along. We only been here a month, so here again, we gather resources too. So we haven't been to the homes like that.
Okay, so you've been here for a month working. What has been accomplished in the past month?
Many referrals, many, many referrals. As some of you may know, if not all, there's still survivors in hotels and white deal. And the first time, the first day we went to them, there was many, there were many needs, many, many needs, from food to clothing to employment to housing, trying to fix their house, ductwork and roof and everything. And from then, we got, I mean, what we didn't have, we went back to the office and we gathered those resources. We then went back out and we took the resources back to them. If they feel comfortable enough leaving out their phone numbers, we knew where they were, so we were able to go back to them and provide those resources to them.
So, so what I'm gathering from reading here that this is, you're putting a program in a place to assist people with mental distress that have difficulty coping with what went on, how to get back on their feet, giving those type of services that we're talking about not so much as building houses or putting structures back, but to support them mentally, to try and sustain them and get days and leadways. So it's more this on a non-help basis, trying to carry people through doing things that's really got them depressed and upset.
How much money do you have in this grant?
We do not know that. We have not been disclosed that information. You know, we have, we have the need to know that, you know, so.
Well, and not taking them away from Columbus or Robinson, because they get a little more than we were. There's just going to be money for Blaine.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Now, if you want to answer the question, answer that. I got Martha Locklear's number, you want it?
I think this Martha Locklear should have been here tonight.
Well, have I, were you talking about money to give to Blaine? Is that what you're talking about?
I just, yeah.
We don't, we don't have finan, we don't have financial resources to give out. We link people to resources that could better assist them in their state.
So is this grants just for your employment?
No, sorry.
It helps the citizens.
It does.
So if it's a, if it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant and all of it's used in Columbus or Robinson or Blaine, that's when you need, we need to know which money you got.
Okay, well, here again, Martha Locklear's number is nine one zero three one six zero five zero seven.
From what, from what I'm gathering, this is just another division of East Point that houses all of our mental resources in this area. This is something that's all funded through East Point. The person we need to be talking to about funding is East Point. That's where all the money's been funded through, it's funded through East Point. They're talking to it right here. They are handling every aspect of, it's East Point.
It's the flow-through money.
That's what I'm saying, but they're the ones that got the money.
Lots of money we get sometimes is flow-through money.
Okay, but we need to talk directly to East Point.
Well, no, we need to understand what Hope for, what, what we're receiving about.
East Point, I know too, certainly has a lot of money.
I think, ma'am, if I may, what I gather that you try to do, which I think is a great thing, I think you're a communicator to go out, to find the people, to assist the people, to get them to the points of contact that can aid them with anything that they may need, whether it's mail, home, or whatever. Another identity that can help people reach and hopefully rebound as quick as they possibly can.
I agree.
And I appreciate your service. I appreciate what you're going to try to offer.
And on that, I, I, again, as I'm in, I do, I commend you for what you're doing. I just want to have an example of what you're actually going to do. I mean, I understand what your, your goal is, but at the time, if you are in fact up and running, but yet you don't have a list of all the agencies that you can refer the survivors to, you don't have an answer on how much funds are actually available. I'm just wanting to know, can you give an example of something, since you are up and running? So you say, and so you're advertising, marketing, and have this, and hospitals and everything else. If someone was to call you today or yesterday, or since it has been, how, how long has this been, this one has been marketed for? How have you marketed it and what do you?
It's been marketed over here since last week. It started over here last week. I've been going to the agencies. So if they call us, what we will do, from what we already have in place for is the resource guide. You know, we will see what's on there that will meet their needs.
Is that the, I'm here, the resource guide, where's that?
Oh, no, we have it in our personal toolkit.
Oh, okay.
And that's how we link them, that's, that's in our toolkit. We find out what they need. And if we have resources for them, then we will tell them who to contact and a number. And that's where we will go from there. Now, if they need our assistance further, we, we are limited as to what we can do because, you know, we are in there and out of there. We're trying to assess their needs, and then if they need linking with a services, a service of some sort, then that's what we do.
Can you refer them to?
If, whatever they need. Again, if they need, if they need to go to the health department, if they need to know a contact person, you know, different things that the health department offer, then we can tell them that they can go and get this at the health department or that at the health department, not just if they need some type of medical assistance, then hopefully we will get a gamut of doctors or community centers that we can refer them to.
So, Ms. Romell, you just have referral services, that's what?
Basically, I mean, we go out there and we don't do any extensive, we can't do it because, you know, that's someone else's job, right? We're just kind of check, checking on them and seeing how they are bouncing back, as you said, from the flood and if there are any resources available already in the county that we can possibly refer them to if they need it. That's it.
So, so, because basically what the grant is saying here is that right now you're working on an intermediate ISP grant. That's the type of grant that you guys are working on right now. And you are in the area now, checking to see what additional needs are here. Then they will submit to see if Blaine County qualifies for the ISP grant, which is regular service needs. So that's what you guys are doing, gathering information to put those grants in place, right? That's what this is saying, is what it said?
I, you know what, my understanding there in place, but here again, I'm not the one to answer that. Martha Locklear would be the one, so I would.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to quit. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It wasn't our personal thing. We didn't know there was, we didn't know there was a Martha Locklear. We thought this was it.
She's our director and she would answer any question that we did, okay?
Give her a warning, I'm going to call her in the morning.
Okay.
But, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Blaine County Water District, fifty, questions going to Water Mower?
One second.
Second, by Mr. Bullock. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Three seven Water Mower.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're fortunate to have Tim Carver going to help KC here tonight. Of course, with us, there's Steve Smith for Rural Development. And they're going to do it upfront and ask any questions you got considering the letter of conditions for regarding the financing for the project.
Thank you, gentlemen. We talked about this several meetings, so if anyone has any questions for Steve or Tim, for their winner or winner now.
I have a question. I wasn't here, unfortunately, I was in the weather the last time the job was here. I was just see both. But I did have a question. I know that we discussed, or if you mentioned in the meeting, that I wouldn't have that if we were able to agree to supply the five hundred thousand dollars that we would then be able to give, be given a million dollars when we go towards this project. And I know that on the agenda, and I've spoken with Mr. Ross Ray, that on the agenda it says, you know, type of, the need for the potential government shutdown could affect the USDA's ability to allocate funds. So what my question is, without having, without being here in the prior meetings, I just apologize on that. But I want to just make sure that if we are going to agree to fund this five hundred thousand dollars for the water district to take place moving forward, that based on this type of government shutdown, that is not going to then affect us receiving a million dollars that under the agreement that if we were to fund it, you know, we wouldn't get. um, that it's not going to then affect us receiving a million dollars that under the agreement that if we were to fund it, you know, we wouldn't get.
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably, I'm from the third agency, USDA rural development, I'm longer, uh, and I represent the agency. And what we're here tonight to do is to, to deliver what we call the letter condition of the funding package. And the funding package is basically, uh, a total project cost of like six billion, five hundred fourteen thousand dollars to, to expand the water system. Uh, and out of that six point five billion, the funding package that we're offering is four billion, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar loan, a one million dollar grant, a aggregate contribution of five hundred seventeen thousand dollars, out of which seventeen is for tax fees from new users. So it's five hundred from basically from the district, seventeen from the tax fees, for a total project of the cost of six billion, five hundred fourteen thousand. Now, out of that four billion, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, uh, that is a loan for forty years at two point seven five percent interest rate. Assuming that it is funded for full discord, which is spiring or runs out on June the thirtieth. Now, getting back to your question about funding, this is a, this is a letter condition, and all we're asking for tonight is a resolution that the, the district intends to meet these conditions, so we can continue to move forward with the application. And on a normal year funding, uh, when we come to do this type of, uh, deliver letter conditions, we're pretty sure funding is in place. You, you would normally get a letter probably from our state director, or acting state director, within probably four, five days, state has been funded. Once it's been funded, it's obligated, the money's set aside, then straight is locked in. He could actually be lower, he'll never see that. The only difference right now is, is due to the government and the budget, and we're on a continuing resolution. We have, our allocation is like we have it on paper, but we don't have it yet, and once the government, uh, passes a resolution that, I mean, not a resolution, but a spending bill that will spend the, uh, spending through the end of year, which we understand, they're working on that now. They did pass a spending bill Friday, that will go through this Friday, and hopefully this weekend, that will be extended till September thirtieth. Once we get that in place, we, it's our, uh, understanding, uh, that we will get our regular allocation at that time, and then, then the money is, and then we continue to move forward with the process of that application. Now, this doesn't lock the district in anything. They can back out anytime they want to.
I know, so it's that signed contract.
No, it's just your intention to meet the conditions that we're saying that you have to do in order to get the funding package.
And can I ask a question now? You're, on this amount of money, like, you, we allocate and everything, the projects is digged up six point five, or four, is there any contingent money in this, where we get to a point where if something go wrong, then we can-
Yeah, actually, in their, in their letter conditions, which has been sent out, there's a breakdown of the project cost. It's got it broken down from construction, engineering, basically the soft costs, legal costs, and this particular project has that, uh, six point five billion there is set up right now, uh, two hundred seventy-five thousand contingency.
That's included in the grant?
That's included in total project cost.
So, if, if, well, as I said, if they don't bring into those contingents, then that money just be, just less from the amount of the-
Actually, if the project, and this is an estimated cost, you know, you never know to the project to be able to get into the project. Now, the estimated project cost is six, and, and the way the money is spent is the owner contribution or the district's money. So that five hundred seventeen thousand is spent first. So when you start moving forward with the project, and we start approving pay requests, the first money is spent is after contribution. Then we go to, to loan. Then we start spurs and funding on the loan. Then we get the grant. If for some reason the project only costs, uh, six point three million, then that two hundred thousand dollars, if, if you could find additional work that's within the original scope of the project, you know, you can expand it to, to use that money. If for some reason you don't expand it within the scope of the project, and there is money left over, then the money that's de-obligated or sent back would be the grant. But we do everything we can with the engineer and the district to try to utilize every bit of that money. If there's any money left over, what you will lose would be the grant part.
So, to the engineers, is that contingency enough to handle of what you got?
Well, what happens with contingency, that's generally what's spent last anyway. So if you, if you have a budget overrun, or something happens, you add to something, you give in to the contingency, and that's usually later in the process. So, generally speaking, by that time, we, we, we kind of know where we sit with the project funding. Um, so it's basically, uh, five percent.
Yeah, uh- He was actually cutting back, said, back, normally a water project, we, we, we recommend five percent contingency, so it may not quite be bad, but, uh-
This, this one's a little different, because it has such a large contingent of water meter replacement, which are, you know, some pretty normal commodities. But at, at any rate, the contingency, um, will stay, we don't really start eating into contingency until we exceed some line item in the budget. So if you exceed a lot under per meter, you might even into contingency to fund that, depending on what you have or have not spent at that point in time.
But what I'm asking, when you guys come in and let us know what's going on, when we look at it, and something can be added to it, you would come in and let us know that-
Yeah, we'll, we'll give periodic updates, uh, plus, or forward, and, uh, dolphin, and like that.
I was just saying, so basically, um, Blaken's terms here, contingency fund is when you are exceeding anything, it's where you tap into your big bank, you got stuff, kind of safety to tap into.
If you bid project and it came over a little bit over estimate, then you got a little bit of contention, they can cover that. And keep in mind now, uh, it's not the go back loan and not make the grant, it's sort of a package deal. So if we approved the loan, it's a grant's also approved. And it's, like I said, the interest rate, assuming it's approved before June thirtieth, because our interest rates change quarterly, so they're locked in right now at two point seven five, so assuming the loan is approved by June third, which we anticipate it will be, we think it should be approved next two or three weeks at most.
Okay. Any kind of motion to accept USDA letter of condition regarding that? Mr. P, any motion accepted by Mr. Britt? Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Blaken Community College, Dr. William Penn. On the Washington Ex-Board Board. Much by Mr. Good, second by Mr. Bull. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
We're out of Water Mower. Sounds like Blaken Community College, Dr. Penn.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'd like to say good afternoon to the commission, Mr. P. We thank you for what you have did in the past. Thank you for what you've discovered. We thank you for what you've helped us. We're coming this afternoon known as far as our budget requests. As Blaken community colleges, we bring hope, we bring opportunities, and we bring jobs, for our role ones that we raise up here in the county of Blaken. We couldn't exist, we got our fifty-eight of us to come in, and what can support we get from the conditions? So we're here with a budget request, we come behind every year, we build to the bottom of our fifty-eight from the college, so we hope y'all understand our practice after.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to thank Phillip Ho, who is our IT person, and make sure I stay on schedule here. There was me, Jay Stanley, the standard vice president of finance, and Jeff Meier, please, back there, who is executive vice president. So we have some information tonight to, uh, expand on our budget requests. I know you've seen it. Uh, we sent that, uh, through, uh, to you, through the county manager office in April. Uh, but, uh, we start off with a picture of the spring of our campus. The buildings far back there is building one. Uh, just before you said, the building, the campus is, uh, the college is fifteen years old this year, and, uh, that building was built, uh, in the next year, in nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and then it's building one. We're not real rich right here, it's building one. Uh, building two, the two-story building was the next story building, so that's our campus, beautiful campus here, once again, one of the spring. I thought you'd be interested in our enrollment at the beginning of spring semester, that thousand ninety-two credit students, uh, students that were, uh, added or registered for a second eight weeks course. We're now to eleven, hundred fifteen, so in my pencil, that is eleven hundred fifteen students this semester, and you get an idea of where many of them are, general education. Uh, many of those students in that program are interested in our allied health programs, college transfer programs is next highest, and you see the list there. Socially nursing, you see forty-seven students. It's a two-year program, and practical nursing, twenty-four students there. Um, we learned today, just today, that, uh, the schools in the colleges, committee colleges in the state that have these two programs, we began in two thousand fifteen, twenty students in social security nursing, and about that number in, uh, the practical nursing, and everyone completed those courses, and we're the only school that had a hundred percent completion. So we're real proud of that. I mean, some schools had eighty percent, ninety percent, but only Blaken Community College had a hundred percent completion. Students just started, finished programming, graduated, and that's certainly what we try to do at the college. Uh, the next screen is our high school program. Now, I think you've seen this in the media. Uh, we've been putting some information out. The number of students this year who are high school students enrolled at the college, two hundred nine this year, and you see the various programs. They can't just take any course, and that's important to understand, they can't just come take a variety. Some of those four courses there, take certain programs, and so you see the programs we offer, some in college transfer course, but other areas there, welding, cosmetology, associate degree. So these are the programs that we've identified, uh, that we have here from a selection that we could get from our system office. We're going to add allied health for next year, working on that right now, because there's such an interest in that area. Uh, next, I thought you'd like to see, uh, the, uh, as you know, the bond vote in March of two thousand sixteen did pass. Two billion dollar bond, Blaken Community College gets six point five million of that for new construction. And I want to remind you that the state average was sixty-three percent in favor of Blaken County, proved to sixty-seven percent. So we're real pleased that we're toward the top of the approval for that. But this is ours, we're ending it, the trustees have approved, um, for the building, and, I mean, it's a sketch and so on, but you get to see the size of it, which is about twenty thousand square feet of space. And then the next slide, unfortunately, you've got that in front of you, and in front of you is hard to read, but you get a sense of, of what we have around. The far right is an auditorium, takes about a hundred, deeper, smaller, turn, be a teaching auditorium, we'll use that day for classes. And then right in the middle, well, there's interestway there, uh, right outside the auditorium, but in the middle are two laboratories, uh, spaces we have, and two EMS classrooms. So those are the four right there in the center, and then five additional classrooms. Uh, we are fortunate to have, uh, the six million dollars, six point plus million that we have, because we've run out of space, even for our eleven hundred students, twelve hundred students. In the fall, we also have more students, we'll probably have twelve, thirteen hundred students in the fall, and we don't have enough lab space, so we devoted a good bit of this building to lab space. So that's our building there. Uh, before the bond, before we got the bond, we knew we needed building, so we applied it, as you all know, you helped us with this, with a grant of fifty thousand dollars for a spin building, and you see the plan for it. We are working on this now. Trustees have given approval for this building, and just given approval, it's one point eight six million dollar bill from Golden Leaf and from Economic Development Administration. So it will have, um, technical programs in there, manufacturing technology lab, which is open space, we can use for several purposes, and removing our computer programs to that. So, uh, first building you saw, continued building. We'll start, um, construction on that sometime next year, two thousand eighteen. Be finished in nineteen, this should follow on the same way. So we're definitely blessed with that, uh, it's keeping our finance plan, uh, this is what its sole work is, trying to manage each project. Uh, now we come to the budget request, uh, to manage some of this, and I do want to highlight our campus requests this year, I think it's certainly in line. Um, it's at fairly minimal, I think, a hundred twelve thousand, four hundred twenty-nine. Uh, we anticipate the legislature, perhaps you as well, two percent salary increases, this is for our county employees, and what that toes. You all have been very generous, uh, for many years to give a scholarship of five thousand dollars. That's fairly unusual. You know, when I came here, I was surprised at that, asked a couple of you, Mr. Peterson's honor board then. But you support student scholarships in that respect, and it is much needed. I know if you, if I'd ask you, you know, a number of people that could benefit from that. So we're asking that you increase that to ten thousand dollars, so a five thousand dollar increase to benefit more students. Over seventy percent of our students are on some form of a HED scholarship, so you'll help in that respect, certainly putting that in place. Um, we do have needs and plant operations maintenance, and that's optimized in the, um, detail of our budget request. And then a fairly unusual request, I guess, because none of us before, uh, we are able to get, secure seventy thousand dollars in funding for a career coach program, and this is a program where two people, individuals are employed in the high schools, help students as they go on with their work. This makes sense. Students in high school, what do you want to do? It's council positions, to help them identify what they could do in the future. So we'll help with that, and come to Blaken, but they could go anywhere. Um, we have to match that with seventy thousand dollars, and, uh, we can't use state money for that, so we're turning for you, we don't have grant money for that. So we hope that you'll help us with that. Uh, we have one council now, who divides the time in the high school, um, where it's a day, one day at each of the high school, has been very beneficial, so we, uh, know about this program, it's offered to all the community colleges, so it'll help you fund that. So that's our total request. Uh, I did, I did put on here the, uh, continuing funding for our deputies, uh, and we certainly have, I think, self-cap teams here, if that gear is still here. There it is. Uh, I think he would, uh, agree with this. Uh, we have had an excellent result of the deputies that we have on campus. Say deputies, because we have full-time security on campus now with a uniformed, uh, deputy. It certainly made our student service people happy. Uh, we don't have any incidents, but every once in a while, you have some sort of turmoil, uh, little skirmishes and so on, and that's gone. You have to investigate that, sometimes you have students and so on. That's gone to almost zero. We have very little problem, and it's the evidence of the deputies, they're out to see people, they walk around, they know students, they talk to them, so it's been amazing to me. Uh, Mr. Troy wanted this, he asked for it, uh, for several years, uh, and, uh, we were very pleased to have this. So then we get into capital request. Uh, we have an auditorium roof that is failing, and, uh, we're afraid it's gonna leak it, it's a wonderful space, as you know. Um, I cannot believe the cost of that, but we had two companies come, engineers come and say, this is what the cost is estimated to be. For roof replacement, of course, like the last presentation, we only spent what it's cost, but we had to take the whole thing off. It's got two layers on it, take all that off, then let's put a third on and, uh, replace that. And then, um, we do have some ADA restroom issues. Uh, we've been working overtime on our doorways, so we have automatic doors, which we haven't had in the past, but in the last several years, we've been moving around the buildings for that, so if you've been to auditorium, you may notice we have it on that, library, main building, so. But it's really the restrooms that, um, again, the cost is unbelievable, but when you go into a restroom, the way it's designed, it's seventy, seventy, it's got seventeen billion, so we have seventeen sets of, of restrooms. They have to go in and do all the plumbing over, jackhammer the concrete, redo the plumbing, so there is a cost. That's what we estimate to do, and I'll say anything in that area will be helpful to fund a little bit each year for several years we could go in. The auditorium is one that is mostly, is used often, and the, that's one that's gonna cost the most, we estimate thousands of dollars just to do those two restrooms. And then East Arcadia facility was high on the list for our, um, trustees. Uh, it is a, as you know, a, a building that we have at East Arcadia. Uh, we have classes there, uh, now mostly non-credit. We've done welding this semester, flavotomy is often done down there, and so to redo the outside, which is failing, after twenty years, a twenty-year lease on that, uh, we're asking that that be replaced with minimal cost. So we've separated out the capital request, and then highlighted some of the requests and requests. So the last thing, as I was doing, as you may on the board know this, we're Blaken Sands, uh, and this is just for surrounding community colleges, and we appreciate, we have come up. So now, this doesn't count capital, this is just what you give us to operate the office on campus. So that means it's the maintenance on campus, uh, lights, heating, and all that sort of thing. So we're at six hundred sixty-five dollars per student, and you see where those around, those that come out today, I can't figure out James Spark got, I mean, I don't where they got sixteen hundred, because that count isn't, seems, doesn't seem that much different than us. But they've been up to this number, um, for a number of years, and then I put Brunswick on here, which is, you know, certainly a well-to-do county. I put it down because it's the second in the state, the second best FTE funded, so you see where that is, about top eighteen hundred. Central P might charge us a little bit more than this, but, uh, Brunswick is second in the state. So we, uh, appreciate the help you can give, even a little bit, will get us up there where we can, uh, use. Uh, we send you, as you know, the county budget East Point, and we're very careful, judicious in how we manage it. I think we do well with that. We're very careful with it, and, uh, we appreciate your help with that. Mr. Chairman, I thank you, members of the board. Appreciate it. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. I got off now. Thank you, Miss.
Uh, Reverend Paul, Mr. Ryan?
Good evening. I come to say, you know, about a partial land that, um, was the county foreclosed on in two thousand sixteen, that was, um, that be- I come to say, you know, about a partial land that, um, was the county court closed on in two thousand sixteen, that was, um, is that fifty-three, John Castle? T, I'm sorry, John C. Castle, somebody, anybody? And I had a bid of, um, ten thousand five hundred dollars on April eighteenth by Mr. Ronald Parkinson. And the county consent at the time was ten thousand four hundred, and I asked the board to consider to approve the bid of ten thousand five hundred. So I have to start the offset bid procedure.
Pleasure, board. Much to your credit, uh, except the bid by Mr. Dill, accepted by Mr. Britt, any discussion?
I got a one question. I'm looking at that, says value is forty-five seven, is that for, is the house there?
The forty-five thousand seven, that's the total value, the house itself is forty thousand four fifty, and then the land is five thousand two fifty.
And the, and the whole?
It's at a E grade, which is about as low as you can go.
And the house is at E grade, those two?
There's gotta be a lot of work to be done.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Economic Development, Mr. Chuck Houston, I'd consider, Dr. Economic Development Commission Amendment Bylaw. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Chuck? No questions about the amendment by law?
Oh, we amended on that, chairman, what did you ask you? We started, we started completely over.
We did the whole thing over?
Yeah, we, we did the whole thing over, because the, the others were sixty years old, they didn't allow for email and things like you have today. Uh, in fact, there was a question as to what the real ones were, because, uh, there were some done around eighty that, that was an indication might have been adopted. So we did new ones that reflected what you all were looking for today.
Okay, and you did, we did meat skin and all that, tiny parts of it.
A pleasure, board.
Salute.
Call you up, right by Mr. Bull. Any discussion? Some comment I have on there, I wish, I wish, and I'm not going to, it's okay with me, but I wish you would have met more quarterly.
Well, he made, he had, he had the discretion where he called.
Yeah, but I wish you had more monthly meetings since we just started this group back, but that's all, that's my comment, and that's well and good. Motion to approve, I've got that, all in favor, say aye. All right, we did that, thank you. Item B, uh, for calling, I'm second commissioner to this board. Mr. Chairman.
I move that we appoint three three.
Okay. Uh, much by Mr. Dill, second, Mr. Bull. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Britt. Advisor point, Blaine Fire, Rule Fire Committee.
Replace, uh, John's Freddie.
The second?
Second.
Mr. Bull, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, Bay Tree Lakes Fire District, Dublin Fire District, keep Blaine beautiful, while they plan this on in the next meeting. Please, um, County Manager, Mr. Greg Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly review the calendar with you for the months of May and June. And coming out this Friday, May fifth, uh, that evening, the Bladenwood Care Annual Gala will be held at Louisville Vineyard. Um, on Tuesday, the ninth, as well as Wednesday, the tenth, and Thursday, the eleventh, there will be active train, active shooter training held for Blade County employees. And that will be at the Agricultural Services Center. Um, also, on Wednesday, the tenth, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners will have its annual County Assembly Day in Raleigh. And a number of you are scheduled to attend that. Also, we do have, uh, transportation lined up, we have a band extension, so we can coordinate, um, transportation that day. We'll be in contact, a, a time happen, pick it.
Yes, sir, it'll, it's usually early, like seven, it, it starts around nine and nine thirty, so usually it'll be one seven, but we'll confirm that as well. Um, also, on Friday, the twelfth, at eleven AM, the Blade, or, or basically all day from eleven to eleven, the Blade County Relay for Life Annual Gala will be held at Ellisburg Town Middle School. On Monday, the fifteenth, there is.
Excuse me, is that Friday or Saturday?
That's on Friday. That's a good question, I have some, maybe it's on the Thursday.
It starts at night, no, they just call in the east.
I'll let you do one night.
Thursday, Thursday. Okay.
Eleven, eleven.
Probably is Saturday.
It's not Saturday.
Thank you. Um, on Monday, the fifteenth, at five thirty, the board has a, uh, or is scheduled to have a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting. That will be here, the Board of Commissioners also, also meets that evening at six thirty. On Friday, the nineteenth, and Saturday, the twentieth, the, uh, White Lake Water Festival will be held that weekend. Um, on Monday, May twenty-ninth, offices will be closed and observance of the Memorial Day Holiday. And on Wednesday, the thirty-first, from nine thirty AM until four PM, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, in conjunction with the School of Government, will have a session entitled Human Services, whatever you can, the commissioners should know. So, um, if you're able to attend that, um, that's in Wilmington, we can coordinate transportation, if you'd like for us to look well on that.
I want to have one, uh, he's talking to have the May Day on the thirteenth as well, and parade start at ten to three. Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
You invited to ten?
Oh, you're on schedule, you know, you'll do the mental health thing with it.
I can't, Mr. Chairman, while we have our calendars out, if we, we could, um, you know, we've had some conversation regarding a special meeting for mental health. We originally understood that the fifteenth did not work for representatives from East Point, um, and so we talked about the twenty-second last week at our board meeting, or our budget meeting. Now, they have indicated the twenty-second doesn't work, however, they can make the fifteenth work. So I would like to see if you would be able to, um, come around four thirty, maybe to get started. And I know we have a busy afternoon with, for it being our five thirty and a regular meeting at six thirty, or we could just have it as part of our six thirty meeting, but I didn't know if it'd be helpful to have that extra time.
Are we living that, been, written that longer than I would, or, or how long time talking about?
I don't have a clue, Mr. Cardell. We can meet earlier, or we can put it during the meeting and meet late, whatever, pleasure, board. Yeah, I'll be. Four thirty's gonna be a.
That ain't gonna be enough time.
Mr. Southie, what's your schedule there?
I'm free, but I can't get W Y, because we get four, because I need three. It just takes, we can back play.
You can be on four, four thirty. Four thirty, not enough time.
Yeah.
You leave that four o'clock, four o'clock, hour and a half, you're there? Think that would be another hour and a half at four o'clock?
I can push schedule for four.
I'm just saying, what you're discussing, you want to do it in a regular meeting?
No.
That's exactly what I'm asking, Mr. Cardell.
I said, but I'm saying, with, 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 I don't have, you think that would be longer?
You want to do it during a regular meeting or?
Uh, four o'clock.
Okay.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Motion, give me a motion. Second by Mr., um, motion by Ms. Ash, second by Mr. Ray, any discussion? He expected to start at four o'clock.
Thank you very much.
And just for the public information, East Point will be here. And if you've got any concerns or questions, hit and give a commissioner, because it will not be open up to the public to ask questions. There will be two places for you to ask questions, or make comments on an individual, would that be your time to speak? If you're not going to participate in the conversations that we have with East Point during that discussion. And Mark.
Okay, thank you. Moving over to the month of June, on Thursday, the first, at six PM, there's the first, uh, Sunset Jams Concert. Ser, uh, the first of that series begins at White Lake, and the Holiday Band will perform that evening. On Monday, the fifth, there's a prayer service here at eight AM, Board Commissioners meets that evening at six thirty. On Thursday, the eighth, at seven PM, seven PM, the Blade County Fire Association meeting will be held at the Hickory Grove Fire Department. On Thursday, the fifteenth, the second in the series of the Sunset Jams Concert, uh, will be held at six PM, and Soul on the Beach will be the band performing. On Monday, the nineteenth, the board meets here. On Tuesday, the twentieth, at six thirty, the Ellisburg Town White Lake Area Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner will be held at Louisville. And then on Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at six PM, the, the third, uh, event in the Sunset Jams Concert Series will be held at White Lake, and North Tower will perform. So this is a busy month for concerts at White Lake.
Same with the norm and having the pumps, Mark?
That's separate, that begins in July, if I'm not mistaken.
That's a good warning. Let me, um, start this out, it's okay. East Point's gonna come on the fifteenth, and they're gonna give us some guidance or explain what they do and what their role is around mental health. And they have some providers coming too, so it's gonna be up, they're gonna make the presentation in with us. If you have any questions, if you don't mind sharing them ahead of time, it's sort of would facilitate things, and then they don't actually question you, certainly would, you know, you're able to ask those, but it might help facilitate if you know you have questions before. But if you don't, you can ask them that night.
Who, who's, who's gonna be here for this?
The, 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 the head fee, CEO, and.
They're found, I know.
Those will be here. So I just say that so that we can maybe facilitate it a little better. And Greg, we don't have any budgets, uh, scheduled here.
That's, that's what we'll, um, we'll plan to do, either tonight, or we can do it on fifteenth, when we, when we have the, uh.
If it might.
I know, I mean, I understand, the presentation will be on fifteenth. So normally, we have the public hearing scheduled for the first meeting in June.
Okay. Miss Bead, on that workshop, we've worked only one time, with those small meetings, that we were looking at considering when would that take place, if that could be a part of the budget, about it? The workshop we've been meeting are earlier, when we had those small group sessions.
Workshop's about what?
About personnel.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be a part of the budget?
Part of the budget?
So are we gonna meet seven like that, or gonna meet this one joint?
No, we're gonna have small groups, talk about the budget.
I'm, I'm just running, we're gonna schedule that, that's why I'm.
Well, I just had.
No, well, no, I might, uh, the, I think the clerk, the, the commissioners that the clerk spoke with after the last meeting last Monday, I understood it was like the fifth through the, through the fifteenth or whatever were the dates that were, so that's still some time off, so that didn't, that didn't happen as early as we, I think, at life, last Monday, when it was suggested.
Our commissioners got a meeting now, got all our work done. At least get one ready before you leave again. We got, we got a meeting, got all our work done. You guys all want money?
Everybody want money. Everybody will.
Mr. Chairman, item B, um, this will be a second reading of the amendment to the courthouse security ordinance, and again, just to, uh, to remind you, the board has requested to amend the ordinance to allow for one replacement card at no charge to employees. Uh, the third and future cards would be at a cost of five dollars each.
I'm making moves. Much by Mr. Cardell, second by? Mr. Britt, any discussion? All Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Okay. And Greg? Greg, I know it's not on here, but, um, uh, can we email that, um, Drew Cox, who's bossed back to that four-way stock in Dublin to, to the mayor?
To the mayor of Dublin?
Certainly. And, uh, or maybe calling and say, we'd like to get a copy of that, your attachments here.
Uh, I love that, is there any way, Greg, we can get the gentleman to maybe put up some type of diagram in the paper or somewhere?
It's all in there, matches there.
I'm saying, but where the public can see it.
Well, that's what I just asked Greg to do.
That gonna, okay, I want to make sure, because I know people asking me what this thing gonna look like and what's gonna happen.
They, they've offered to have a community meeting that, that they need to.
Yes. Anything else, in, individual which addresses commissioners? Um, please read your miss ladies correspondent, entertaining much to the journal, so we, Cardell, second, by Mr. Dill, on any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.